We then call to order today is August 12th, it is now 6:02 PM. Town council meeting, the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick Island. Jay with his.
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion, and to work together to create a better way of life for the people of West Warwick. Amen.
Jay with the budget legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I know. Always be secure over nothing.
Councilman Kristen.
Here.
Councilwoman Lachardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Yeah.
Council Vice Governor Williamson.
Here.
Council Captain Goddard.
Here.
Forum is declared.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, due to some time constraints for those who are involved, I would make a motion to move items one and two from category K up to the beginning of the agenda.
Second.
Move in second, roll up here.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. June 20, 2025 monthly financial book.
Good evening, councilors. Current year tax collections total sixty-seven million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, which is a hundred and one point two four percent of the budget for current year taxes. We have exceeded the budget for fiscal year 2025. Prior year tax collections total one million, one seventy-seven, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents, which is equal to ninety point five five percent of the budgeted amount. And this line has been adjusted for the sixty day rule from last year of two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. This will increase slightly when we add the sixty day rule for the current fiscal year 2026 collections back, probably maybe by a couple hundred thousand. Overall, the revenues are a hundred and one point eight six percent, which is slightly exceeds the adopted budget for revenues. This is mainly attributed to strong tax collections, higher than expected finance, fire, rescue fees, building and town clerk revenues. Expenditures are trending over budget a hundred and one point seven three percent. This is one point seven three percent higher than the adopted budget for expenses. This can be attributed to school state aid pass-through, flood expenditures, flood removal costs, winter needs and fire safety. Most of the other departments are running on target or slightly above budget. A budget amendment was processed and able to reallocate funds set aside for negotiations to the respective departments. The Civic Center has current operating expenditures of seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents and operating revenues of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five fifty-eight point seven one. The full amount of the wind turbine electricity expense has been expensed and as well as their share of the property and liability expense has been reported. The bank balance as of August 4th, 2025 is eighteen million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. We earned an additional nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-nine cents in interest on the three million in the interest-bearing suite account with Citizens Bank for the month of July, bringing the balance to three million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, four fifty-four, ninety-one. We also have earned four hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cents in interest on our ARPA funds invested at Central Bank as of May, 2025. Since the majority of our ARPA funds have been spent, these funds have been moved into a CD with interest going to accrue towards the general fund at Central Bank.
What's the rate?
Four point one.
Okay, that's okay.
Yep, and I just locked in the other CD we have there. I just locked in for another six months at four point one.
Any questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen.
Okay. I'm just gonna stay.
I want you. Resolution approving the payment of one million, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars from the general bond star plus three employees retirement system of a run.
You have the resolution.
So, move in second, Kristen.
So, this is, you know, based on the new way of paying the retirement system. We're paying weekly based on covered salaries. So, I do a share up at the end of the year and MERS, because of the attrition and losing the legacy employees, we didn't pay is what we thought we were going to pay. So, this is my suggestion that we pay them one million, twenty-nine, six thirty-five so that we meet the ARC for fiscal year 25.
So, Kristen, so what you're saying is we're one point, one million over as a surplus for that's your budget?
Yes, we can afford to send that for.
Is this the full surplus?
No.
No, one point eight.
All right, are we gonna have to do this every single year?
No, because I'm, I'm, I'm starting to have a different. This, this fiscal year 26, I actually budget a little extra be, just to account for, you know. It's very hard to budget per person for this because you're, for the municipal group, you have to make sure you're counting every single possible salary that they can get. So, it's kind of a guessing game. So, going forward, I'm gonna be a little bit more exact by just plugging in the ARC that's attributed to each group, fire, police. So, it'll be more exact. This was new in fiscal year 25 budgeting their way, you know, as a percent of salaries. So.
But it could, it could happen.
It could, it could. If we lose a lot of legacy, it could. Because legacy is who is paying this big bill.
So, what happens if we don't have surplus? Then we, and we still have to pay this money, where would that money come?
It would come from our, our fund balance. But I don't anticipate this happening. I think this is.
Not to that extent.
Not to this extent, exactly.
Right, exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's just that it's a mechanical way that they have us. It used to be, we knew what the ARC was. I don't know if we did it monthly or quarterly. We just divide it by four and we pay it and we were good. And this is actually by person. So, if someone leaves the job, that.
Right.
Yeah, so it, it becomes a little more cumbersome, but that's how this system works.
We've had a lot of time reading this year.
Yeah, and I'm accounting for that for twenty-seven. I've already started accumulating that data for twenty-seven. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. But I don't anticipate a chunk like this again.
Thank you. Any other comments for Kristen? Questions? Thank you, Kristen.
Do you guys need to vote on the resolution?
Yes, we can.
All in favor?
Yeah. Any other comments? Here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, Lori, go spend some time with your son who's leaving for college in two days.
School building committee, school building committee update.
Good evening, everyone. So, just a quick update. The school building committee continues to meet on the first Wednesday of every month at the high school in the media center at four o'clock. And our architects are finalizing the stage two questions to send back to RIDE for final approval of stage two. We feel very confident in our answers and responses and that we will actually get that final approval for stage two. RIDE's been great. We meet with them on Zoom every few weeks. The project manager has done a good job of making sure that that connection's been made. Tech Tom, the architects and the project manager are busy now creating flyers, pamphlets, posters, informational materials that we can now, that we know will have a stage two approval, start to get out to the community so that more members of the community actually are aware and know exactly what the project entails. So, we're really looking forward to that. And the group from the school building committee is also starting to put together the list of events, upcoming school events, upcoming town events, to get the word out so that people are fully aware of the project when it comes time to vote a referendum. And at our last school building committee, the committee approved to forward to the town council, recommended to forward to the town council, the next agenda item that's on tonight's agenda, the approval of bond referendum language. So, it's really an exciting point. You know, this is almost two years in the making in terms of getting a school bond, excuse me, school building committee together, the committee meeting, getting architects and project manager on board, multiple, multiple iterations. If you recall, way back in the beginning, we did all kinds of studies in terms of population, birth, birth rates, traffic studies. So, it's really exciting to be at this point in the project.
Any questions for Karen?
I, I do. It actually brought to me over the weekend. Somebody looked at the agenda. Question came up about, you know, what is this entail? This, what does this mean? What's gonna happen? So, I explained the best I could, not being on the committee and just by going to the meetings and everything. Bottom line, I explained it, explained it, the need and you know, we're busting at the seams, it's gonna help all the schools fix everything. And he's like, what does this mean on my pocket? And I don't have an answer for that. I think those questions are the most concerning, especially if people don't have kids in school.
Yes.
So, how do we answer that?
I agree, and that's exactly why we're taking this next important step so that people will know and they won't have to ask questions or they're welcome to ask questions always. But yeah, the, your, that person's entirely right. They need to have all the information. So, when we ask for people to support the project, they're fully informed and they can make an informed decision.
So, Jay, I do, I'm gonna show this with everybody once I can make a copy.
Well, so we got, actually, we've asked this be updated and Kristen just left. Matt Blaze is going to update it to make sure that the, the current levy is correct. And then massage it to over seventy-one million dollars, which we determined we had to actually use in the bond language imported to our bond council. So, even though we might not spend it, probably won't spend it.
True, but what does it mean? Like, what can we tell people? Well, I don't wanna give misinformation. I'd rather give no information than misinformation. So, when are we gonna have something so I can tell people that? Or we can tell people that?
So, we can solidify the numbers from, we're gonna hope within the next month that we're gonna have solid numbers. But I do have documentation here that we ran numbers roughly and on average for two point, I'm sorry, I put the wrong thing on my glasses. Yeah, two point two nine percent increase.
And related to this.
Because of the law.
Yes, so in all likelihood, it'll take two years of a four percent increase to pay for this bond and whatever else we might have in town.
And we made sure that as we're going through this project that we wanna stay well below our, our, our maximum increase.
So, is this safe to tell people now or should we wait until we have a hundred percent final number? This person's expecting a call back, so I, I wanna follow with something.
I, I can make you a copy of this before you leave tonight.
But this is.
Yeah.
What is safe, what is safe to say of?
So, so the number that David just gave you assumed that there was a seventy million dollar bond instead of a seventy-one million dollar bond. Seventy, seventy only. So, and it came out with a increase to the tax levy of two point two nine. Assuming a four percent max, which we have, that leaves the rest for the town, if you will. In the second year, Karen's been very transparent in telling us that there will be, and you pointed out, there will be operational costs associated with making these movements and that will help to cover that, that second year. Again, that's worst case scenario, I think, but I mean, it's realistic that that, that could happen.
That's, that's kind of still, excuse me, my statement on the report is I would really like to know by position, what we're looking at for additional personnel and the associated costs of that. And then, again, how do we pay for that? Because what we're looking at is the overall project. We're not considering what's coming down right after that's completed. So, I would really like to know, we're gonna need X number of administrators, X number of custodial people, whatever it might be. And, and, you know, I think Tech Tom has done such a good job in getting us the, the very fine details of the school buildings, the, the projects for the buildings. I would like to know, and I, I think by this time we would know, what we're looking at for additional personnel and the associated costs.
You're a hundred percent right. To David's point, since the beginning, I've been really, you know, I wanna make sure people understand that we understand it will be an additional operational cost. We're fine tuning what that staffing would look like. Well, for instance, one of the biggest parts of the project is fifth grade will lead Dearing in going to the elementary schools. We'll take one administrator from Dearing to be the new administrator at Quinn. The administrator at Quinn now will go to Payon Street. So, I don't anticipate any additional admin positions. Fifth grade teachers will go where the cost for staff will be, will be some office support, custodians for make, uh, Payon Street. And it's the related service providers, that's the tricky part. So, how we're gonna approach it is to share the best we can, like a speech language pathologist between schools, before we just hire a whole new crew of related service providers. We're gonna stretch the ones we have as much as we can. And that's the tricky part. We'll come up with, we'll come up with an estimate, there's no doubt. It'll be an average of the kids we have now in fifth grade or the elementary schools. How many kids need this service? How many kids need that service? To give us a number of how we can share the resources we already have. And the other piece will be transportation. So, once we decide what the districting for the schools will be, then we'll be able to calculate a transportation cost. But the goal is to use as much as we have now before we just add. Just because we're gonna have a new space, our intention is not to hire all new people. Cause we won't need to.
So, I guess my question then becomes, are we premature in looking to put this on a ballot now? And let me qualify that. Fifty-three years old, being in the state for that long. If you put a question on the referendum in this state and in this town, the money, a, a number attached to it, it's going to be approved. We have an apathetic elector in this town with the last town budget that they voted on, two hundred and forty-two people determined what happened, twenty-nine thousand. So, I would feel a lot more comfortable having those estimates and, and knowing that it's not gonna be exact, but estimate before we put something like this on the ballot.
Yeah, we will definitely, within the next couple of weeks, fine tune and estimate. Because when this information blitz that I just described, people will wanna know that. They'll wanna know the rates, they wanna know the increases. So, we'll have that prepared.
What's the deadline that we have thinking of this? If it's gonna be October eighth?
It's, it's coming now.
This rep, is it gonna, this vote would be here? It's not gonna be at the Civic Center, it would be here, right? Just like a normal election?
The actual polling application?
Yeah.
We're gonna have it, we're gonna propose that it's at the Civic Center.
Okay, okay.
But the Board of Canisters is speaking about that on Thursday. If you guys approve this question, they will be Thursday to certify it because it has to be two board elections by the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth of.
Of August.
Yes, yeah, there's a, there's a fifty day backup.
Yes, because a bond referendum is just like a regular election. So, we will have to have early voting, mail ballots, everything.
Okay, that's why I wasn't sure.
It's not like, it's not like a financial referendum.
The early voting would still take place here?
And why do you mean?
Early voting would still.
What's the October eighth about? Why, why do we have it on the eighth?
So, that's under state law, Title seventeen election. So, the Board of Elections put together a calendar for us with a proposed date and actually either be October eighth, I forgot, the second of April. There was one in November fourth, fourth.
So, if we amended this to the fourth, that would give us more time to get more information. We would have another meeting.
Was there, was there a reason left field also in this?
Well, there's the reason that we, it was recommended we go with the eighth is because once, if the bond is approved, then we have to go out to RFP for construction and get RIDE approval on certain things, which would go on the next stage that'd be in this. And to stay in line with the plan, then we could get, you know, shovels in the ground in January with an ultimate occupancy date of the fall of 2017. So, that's why this timeline.
Three seven, three seven, yeah.
So, what is seventeen?
You don't wanna do that.
Nobody wants to rerun the pandemic.
So, that's the importance of this timeline now to keep us on track so we can make these necessary shifts by 2027. And I agree wholeheartedly about people needing the information. Even though we, you know, publicized our monthly meetings, it's a website and everything. It's hard for people to get to meetings sometimes, especially, there's no really good hours sometimes on top of the typical meetings that we have. So, that's why we know in this next information blitz, we have to meet people where they're at. That's why we'll have tables at the open houses and the football games. And I know Lori's helping us with the list of town events. So, we'll make sure, you know, our admin team and the architects and project managers are on board to help us with whatever we need. Again, they're gonna do all the print materials for us and we talked about maybe yard signs, I mean, anything to get people.
Karen, I'll be honest, I really think that people are just concerned, you know, I, I mean, you've been on the council double what we've been on, Dave. And I go nine years on the council, you don't hear from anybody besides Tom or snow removal, yard waste, trash pickup, or budget times. It's after, it's after the budget. It's, why did my taxes go?
I understand, yeah.
And I think really for the majority of people, it's what's coming out of my pocket. And I think that's, that's kind of what I, I wanna give is, what is this gonna mean? It's gonna mean, this is what you're voting for. It's gonna be, the bond is gonna be this, representing on the two point two nine. The question that I was asked, does that count any raises that we've given the municipal unions? It doesn't.
No.
How are they gonna fill this building? Are these buildings came up? And, and basically, those are the three points which are gonna accumulate to a four percent. And how long is that four percent gonna be? That's it.
Yeah, no.
That was it, that's the gist of the whole thing.
Their questions and concerns, I understand. So, it's gonna be our job.
We've made very clear that we want everybody, when they do come out to vote, they, they want information there that's going, in, in previous too, also getting out there.
Yeah.
That when they come out to vote, this is what they're voting for. And I know, I know Karen met with her side, I know the school committee, I know Mark met with members of the council just to try to bring up their speed and go over the ballot questions and our thoughts. And things have changed since then because we met with Karen Grandi, which is our bond council. And she said, you can't have, you've gotta have a reject on here. So, that's why we have up to seventy-one million dollars in a reject vote, you know.
She, she also said that that's the number we have to put on the ballot because that's what the General Assembly approved.
Right.
So, we can't do, we can't do sixty-five because we spent a lot of time saying, really, what do we want that number to be? The language is not to exceed seventy-one million. And she said, that's the number that has to be on the ballot.
So, what happens?
So, that's not gonna change.
So, what happens if it gets rejected? Can we go back and say, you know, we can't go back to a different number, right?
No, unless you go back to the legislation, legislature.
Well, and when that, the money we're gonna be getting that's gonna help us probably, that, that, what's the clock on that? Well, that's kind of.
I'm saving it.
The money that, the money that we're.
The reimbursement, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so seventy-one million dollar project will cost us twenty-two million, four hundred, four, four hundred thousand dollars.
That's great, yes.
It's a, it's a deal of a lifetime.
That's a big part, I mean, that's a huge, that's a, that's maybe the biggest part of it is how much.
We couldn't afford seventy-one million dollars.
The timeliness of it.
Yes.
You know, the, the out-of-pocket cost for people is absolutely a fair concern, fair questions to ask that we have, will have the answers for, including an estimate in terms of the staffing and transportation costs. But to the point of the value in this bond in the long run for the town is really significant. And we've been told it's really a once in a lifetime reimbursement.
That's what I was gonna say, I, I wanna point out one thing. So, two, a couple of things here. First, we as a council did not have to let this go on the ballot. By law, we could have just voted up here ourselves and voted for this or against this. But I know, I was in strong agreement, I know when we first started this conversation that this was one of our first years not having a financial town meeting, that we're bringing this forward. And it, it, it's tough timing, but the negative is, yes, there's gonna be a tax increase. But you gotta also talk about the positives, you know. Getting our fifth grade out on, out of the middle school is, I think, number one priority for many parents in this community. I know I had one child go in the fifth grade in middle school. I know many parents that are on my block that have said to me, yes, I wanna get the fifth grade out because their kids are in second grade, third grade, and they, this may affect them. You're gonna look at all the positives also, and that's what we need to get together and, and get, you know, yes, there's always a negative of raising taxes. Nobody likes to get taxes, taxes are being raised. But you're gonna look at all the positives for the, the future of our town, the future of our children and the future of education here in West Warwick.
So, will you be placing that at the voting? I think it'd be.
We'll have information, yeah.
To vote, like a huge sign, here's the positives. I think the positive weight, they may outweigh the negatives.
Yeah.
You know, but yeah, people need the visual.
Yeah, what, what's really important is, you know, a lot of districts build new schools or renovate buildings just because they'd rather have a new school or, you know, it would be more state of the art or something. Every single thing on this list is a necessity. Green bush windows, for, for instance, you know, they are original windows to the building. So, a lot of the projects in here, town's gonna have to do at some point sooner than later anyways, you know what I mean? So, with the overcrowding issues we have at Dearing, you know, the, the pieces just, the more we talk, the pieces, you know, all started to fit together where, you know, we could do what we need to do and reach our goals without having to spend, I mean, sorry, build a brand new building. You know, we're talking about renovations, addition and all that, which is a more valuable way to go about it.
Okay, just to, just to point out, and I, again, this is on seventy, but at a two point two nine percent increase, assessed home value of, I'm gonna go five hundred thousand because I know the value is just crazy right now, is one ninety-nine oh one per year. You know, tax effects, so I just wanna point that out, so. And, and again, we're just saying, because we're all taxpayers up there, you know, we all pay taxes, you know, I, I understand, you know, when people talk about it, and I know there's people out there saying, my kids are no longer in school. But then there's people that say, my kids are, and, you know, it's, it's been, it's been that way through the existence of West Warwick, right? People always pay taxes, taught to education, so it, it's, again, I think there's a lot more positive, but I know when you are talking to somebody and you can tell them it's a hundred ninety-nine dollars a year, they may be accepting, I don't know.
For the school.
For the school, for the bond portion.
Pretty much, yeah.
But you can never go more than four percent. So, you can't go more than four percent unless you have legislation.
Maybe we won't do that.
And I can tell you now, I'm not, I'm not supporting legislation at all.
No.
There is no law, it's fair, no.
So, I just, I wanna be clear that, you know, I, I think there's really no better investment for a community or municipality than in their education system. I, that being said, I wish we had everything in front of us before we voted on this tonight, only because and this is an opinion. How this goes tonight is how the result of this bond question's gonna be. This gets on the ballot, it's a done deal. And I'm okay with that.
I'm not convinced of that.
I'm not convinced of that.
Well, I think when the two hundred people in time that go up there.
I think, I, I think there's more interest in it that, I guess the, the only thing I would say against not doing it, again, Tech Tom and Left Field have suggested this timing, as has the state. And, and if it was pushed to November fourth, would be the end of the world, no. But it's still gonna be this number.
Right.
This number's not gonna change. It's, it's how you're gonna spend it, and it's not to exceed. The, the seventy-one million allows us to maybe draw down a couple of different times. And the first time that we draw down is what the tax increase would be based on. So, I think it's a question of realizing that we have seventy-one million dollars that has been afforded to us, don't know that we'll spend it. But we also have five years to spend it on all those other projects and still get the sixty cents back on our dollar. So, again, that makes it sort of a no-brainer. And again, we, this is how it has to be written. We can't change that number, it's not gonna change anything. To your point, it will change the underlying, the, the underlying expenses. And I'm sure, as I, I do know Karen has been working on that. She's talked about that at every single school building committee meeting because she, from day one, has said there will be some costs associated with having another elementary school again. There just will be, that's the reality of it. But not to the extent where we're hiring, because again, fifth grade teachers will go from the middle school be redistricted or back to Quinn or wherever. So, I, when you say, you talked about speech pathologists, you talking about like music teachers and gym teachers too?
Occupational therapists, yeah, music, the encore.
Professional teachers.
Free, free Chinese.
I was just curious, the timeline on the literature that would be coming out, Karen? So, early voting will be starting for this on September eighteenth. So, is it possible for that to get, be able to get out?
Oh, we plan, we're gonna meet on Thursday to, a small group of us just to really kickstart it and, yeah. Our goal is to, as soon as we get the print materials, we'll have them out, we'll have them everywhere. We can schedule a community forums if people wanna come to that, we've had before.
So, so, sorry, but would you be willing to, to come back to our September second meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Potentially with some drafts of what that, yeah, what that would look like.
So I, I agree, this is a no brainer. Um, and it's needed and it's a hell of a deal. But when you come back to us, which you know you're going to for, for more money for the operating costs, um. It's almost like we're, we're strong. We have a stronghold that we have to say yes. Because we're the ones that said, yes, we support this mission and we want to go forward with it. And you say we need a million dollars or so. To, to now run this. Can't say no. So that's my only, well, we can't. We can't. I mean, we can't go, I mean, if you, because they, they need it and you're making it very clear what you're going to need that. So my point is, we give that plus the bond. We don't know how much is going to be left for municipal. As long as everybody understands.
There will be.
You know, I'm sure there'll be something if we're going to go four percent, but. If not, so that's going to be, it, it all goes the end of the end.
That, that is very true. It does, because again, I don't, I don't have a personal appetite to ask for anything more than four percent. I just wouldn't do that. I don't think we have to figure out how to operate within that.
To get under four percent, I think.
And, and, and again, that's a possibility too.
We kind of do it every year when we go through the budget season.
Right. But I think it's more realistic to tell people that it'll probably be two years of four percent and surprise them that if we can do better than that. That's what it, that's what it amounts to.
So Ja- Jason, just to, um, go back to your point, just like we did this year. We'll continue to, well, we've done every year, you know, scrutinize our own budget. And see how we can change things. You know, this year we, we're doing things, some things differently. Um, to be able to afford it. So, you know, that'll be part of this as well, like looking at our current operational budget. And. How can we help with the new staffing and transportation?
Any other questions for the update? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Consideration and vote on ballot questions in actual rate of twenty twenty five school bond referendum.
Move the consideration of ballot question.
Sorry, moving second, any discussion? I know we've had a lot of discussion on already, but. Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
We'll also have like more of an update and some of the other things.
Absolutely, yes.
Um, so the board of cameras says we'll meet on Thursday. Um, to certify. What you guys have done tonight and then it will go up to the state at that point and, um, I will forward out that. Draft timeline because that will become the timeline for everything. So early voting will begin on September eighteenth.
Have they, have they seen this at all? I mean, Karen Grandi is, she's done a million of these, so I assume they're not going to have any issues with, with the wording. Yeah, okay.
I think that a lot of that wording was taken from other ballots. For other communities. Um, consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five town council meeting.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Ordinances, first read of ordinance twenty twenty five dash five, reminding chapter eleven motor vehicles and traffic, article two, operation, section forty seven. Motor vehicle restricted routes and dependency traffic ordinance, no parking on fourth.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Move the second, huh?
This has been referred from the traffic. Committee. They are requesting no parking on the west side of Coors Road. From Cedar Drive to Robin Lane. Uh, again, another situation. Where it's requested because of. The difficulty with fire apparatus, having difficulty when cars are parked there. And they're requesting it on the west side. Uh, so that the fire vehicles do not have to travel on the left of center. I don't know whether the chief likes that.
Hello. Um, just, uh, you know, it was brought to the traffic safety committee that, uh, parking, um.
This was brought by, this was brought by a resident.
Brought by a resident, um, and there was, uh, cars parking on both sides of the road. Um, and that they felt that it would be, uh, difficult for apparatus to get in there. Uh, there was talk about whether to try to regulate on one side or the other side. Um, we'd be responding in from. Uh, Police of Avenue. So it just made sense to keep that lane of traffic open on the right hand side as we would be going into the neighborhood.
Any comments from the council?
Right, I'm just, I'm looking at the map. I just want to kind of get an idea.
Yeah, Jay, don't even bother. It's written wrong.
Okay.
It's not east, west. It's north and south at that point. So.
Yeah.
Um. Chief. Do you have any information? You might not.
Yeah.
I've been there twenty four years. Never heard of a problem of any apparatus getting up and down that road. Do you know of any situations?
I do not know of any situations that I've heard that that has happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just going to. Freewheel here. Um, I live in the neighborhood. Um. I'm opposed to this and I'm going to tell you why. Many reasons. Um. One of which is I don't think the issue is speeding. Uh, I'm sorry, is, is, um. A safety concern with apparatus. I think the issue is speeding. At this point, the only thing that's going to help. Speeding is people slowing down to get around the cars that are parked. That being said. Since this came to light. I make extra effort to go up and down that road. There's one black car parked in front of one house consistently.
Every day.
Every day and.
Can't see down.
I lived there for fifty two years.
Hold on one second.
You'll have a chance.
So. People paid a lot of money for these houses. People pay a lot of taxes. For these houses. Who are we? As a government body to tell these people. They cannot park in front of their own home. And if we do that. We're going to force them to the other side of the street. And we're going to make those people that live on that side of the street. Deal with cars in front of their homes that don't belong to them. So. That's why I'm opposed to this. It, it, who are we to take away the full utilization and enjoyment of somebody's property? I don't think this is our place. For some reason in this town, we like to dictate where people can and cannot park, but it's not our business. And anybody that has an issue, and I say this respectfully, anybody that has an issue with this. Please be the first one to volunteer not to have company over your home that can fit into your driveway. Don't have a service vehicle come to your home that can't park in the street. Because there are no carve outs for this. Right? Because you want to have a Super Bowl party. And you can only fit four cars in your driveway, but you've got five coming over. Somebody can't come because they will get ticketed.
And I answered that. Because occasionally.
Hold on, sir. I'm going to let the council finish and you come up. I'm going to let the, I'm going to let the audience speak.
Okay. And again, I, everything I say, I say respectfully because. I understand that it's an inconvenience for people. I understand that it's a perceived safety issue. I understand that there are close calls because people don't always realize, hey, there's a car parked that I really need to slow down. And allow people to adjust and get around cars. But again, if, if this town told me I could not park in front of my home. That might be the last straw and I'm out because. That's my right. If we're going to do this here, we need to do it everywhere. Not on one street. Because we can point to safety issues in a hundred different streets in this town. And this is going to open up the floodgates.
Any other comments from the council?
I, I may, but I'd rather let the gentleman speak.
Just come on up, state your name and address for the record. And just keep, keep.
Professional.
I've been on that street fifty one years. I've been on the street for fifty one years. I have never had a problem with someone parking on the road. For safety issues. This is a safety issue. It's not for the fire, it's not for the police, it's for safety for people coming down the hill. There's a, there's a hill. I have pictures. There's a hill right there. And when you, when you, when you have to go.
Could you pass the round?
When you, yeah. When you have to go, you'll see, you have to go into the opposite lane to get around that car. So when you're going in the opposite lane. You have a chance of being hit by a car coming up the hill, but you can't see the car coming up the hill. Until it's, until it's too late and no one's speeding on that. They're not speeding up and down that hill. They're speeding on, when you come off the Coors Road and go down the Coors Road. But up and down that hill, you can't speed going around that car or you would get hit.
So is the car like a park in front of the owner's house?
Yes, and there's six cars can park in the driveway that's empty. So I don't have a problem. If he parks in the driveway.
I was just talking in the street when you have a toll driveway empty. And I, I'm here, I lived there fifty one years, there's never been a problem. And we've been hit a couple of times. And I know I have ultimately because I filmed the same way because I asked him. I didn't get a petition, but I just asked him, they all feel the same way.
Has anybody spoken to a person who owns the house?
Because I, I asked my wife if I go up or not and of course, you know. Do the way you have to do it here because you've been there. I think we can, I mean, oh, you're not, you had to use that. I understand.
You cannot say.
But I mean, it's. It's going to, it's going to, someone's going to have an answer.
So, so Ted, is. I think, you know, a lot can be solved with communication. If no one has spoken to this person who lives in the home and owns that black car. Is there a way that a representative of the town? Can go and knock on the door and say this is an issue? Is there a reason? I mean, I know the person, whoever it is who come out, it's going to go on the face, right? But it also could be, I didn't realize it. Let me make a better effort to use my six car drive.
You've detracted, stolen permission at this, and their issue was sacred. I'm thinking that they would have debated the issue about asking, it's only one car. And if you want, there's sixteen car drivers in the chain, you know. There could have been something that, that lets you say, listen, just go on speaking to this person. On the other hand, not until it came out.
The point that, uh, Congressman Dennis is making is correct because. A lot of places, I think of Shippensburg. You can't come out of Mullein Street and Shippensburg's parking on both sides because it's still, you see when there's a car coming up, Shippensburg heading towards the avenue. So we have a lot of those problems in this town. So if the person is parking there out of spite, which I don't know. If he's parking it because he has no other place to park, I mean, as long as he's parked legally. You really can't take that parking spot away from him.
Instead of taking that away from him, can't.
Well, did you have a parking driver?
No, I don't mean, I just want to say we, it's come to, it's come to the town, there's, there's an issue, this is the issue. Is there a reason why, oh, we can't tell you not to, but is there a reason why you don't use your driveway? Is it possible to use your driveway? Well, I mean, it's a simple thing. It doesn't have to get to this level.
I mean, it's not that simple, but I'll elaborate. So. Well, I'll just say, I'll just say that, you know, I live on Pine Orchard. And we're, we're in the city. There's a group home, there's a six car driveway. There's ten cars that park there. So there's always four in the street. A lot of times they're at the intersection. Right across from each other. I get it. I get it. I deal with it.
Have no problem with that. If, if he had six cars in his driveway, he has to park on the street. No problem. I understand that. He lives there. But the driveway is empty and he's there all the time.
Yeah, it's not always empty. But I, but I can say this, when you have a house and you, everybody knows this, I'm sure you know this, who have a household full of people? You can't. You think of it right before. How are you parking so you don't have to worry about somebody who's going to probably take a swing at you in your own home? So you park the weekend, listen, maybe. Again, I don't know, but maybe the person who drives this black car says, I'm not going to deal with that. You're going to park the garage.
Lucky that.
That one really is.
And only if.
Majority.
Now, you've been here enough. Please give time, use.
I will, but you're asking questions that I can answer.
Okay. Give us a minute.
So I, I mean, it's safety for me, okay? And the safety for my neighbors. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you, Susan. Can I ask this question? Are you, Al, are you part of the, I'm asking you to stand there again. And out of my glasses, I really can't see a lot. Um, are you, you're part of the traffic committee, Carl? Yeah.
Oh, it's my work committee, sent for your quote. And I put it in by.
Are you going to, do we know if the traffic committee went to that?
Yes. I don't know whether they went when the traffic committee was submitted to the traffic line. So you studied with, it turned, uh, major, uh, um. Protection, yes, settle to me.
Well, with this study though, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I don't, it's at the lowest level. Yeah, it's not going to be easy for a sign off and we have to study it with a sign. This, this involves people, like, civil can be handled pretty civilly at the lowest level. Can I ask, is anybody here a member of the chief of home?
Yes.
Um, you're, are you a member of the traffic committee?
Yes.
All right. Chief, please. Um, either chief. And when you do this, this is how you implement this particular study for traffic. Has anybody reached out to the person who owns?
There was some, there was some discussion about having a council person in the area. Approached them. Um, but what is that, that might appear strong on me. And, you know, they have a way to park in front of the house. And if we as a government agency, saying, you know, what are you going to do? Right, I, you know, should see that, you know? Well, we're going to. Take action or was that?
So nobody approached the person and.
No, nobody approached the person and said, hey.
No. So this, this, so.
We have to, we have to, we have to know what's going on. So I just want to clarify this out.
This ordinance, did it go up to every homeowner, like on this property?
No. I wouldn't have known about it. I would have called the police.
Wait, so when there's no parking, don't people usually get notices when the, when people are going to affect their property? No?
No.
Really?
I always thought.
Then they're going to play loud music, they just like.
Right, yeah, we're going to play the.
The ten houses on the left side will probably be here and the eleven houses on the right side are going to be here and they're probably all be arguing.
No, they both, both, they both not want it because it's going to cause more traffic in front of the house too. I mean, I.
Thank you, chief.
I thought you were saying one, one, it, it, it should be, even if it's not a requirement. I feel like everybody on that street should have, at least have a chance to come up and speak. But I'll let you speak, Al. I just wanted to say.
Okay, out of the laws of the fire, I'm on West River. I live at the end of the street, okay? I've lived there since nineteen eighty nine. There has never been any problem. About. A year ago. Uh, one of the houses changed hands, okay? No problem that he has a large driveway because. The other, I believe there's like six. Don't quote me on the exact number, six, eight cars that they had.
You're talking about that house?
This house. That's not this position, okay? That car is there. We drive around it, we throw slalom, no problem. Uh, about a month ago. I emailed some of you guys with pictures because it's not just during the week. During the week in May, uh, brutal, however, on weekends, cut apart on both sides of the street, okay? About, as I said, about a month ago. There was an incident where an ambulance was with, with respect to a house very close to this one across the street, okay? It was an emergency. The ambulance could not turn around and go back down that street because of the traffic, okay? Someone is going to die. That, that was that house. My neighbor is. Critically ill, okay? They make an ambulance around the corner. Okay, same thing. They can't go up and down on the weekend. There are other neighbors around me. That have that same issue. And someone is going to die unless this goes out. I contacted the chief and I, uh, commended him. Because I sent him pictures. They instead of referring to the chief, the chief referred to the traffic committee and they came out with a sensible alternative. No fucking on the left side of the street.
Which is which side?
Which is a Southside crossroad, he lived in Carter Park. The reason they live in the town assuming they're reasonable land is because that's where the motor box is off. And when the trucks go off, they deliver mail on that side. It's not a matter of speeding so much as it is safety. Somebody is going to die and I swear to God. Like one of my neighbors dies because there's a problem getting a rescue apparatus up that street. Because on the weekend, it's very narrow. One of my neighbors has a Mazda CX three, which is a little bit of a smell. He's tiny thick. The ambulances and fire trucks cannot get through there. Next, the traffic is on both sides, which is usually almost every weekend. And I will defy you to go and drive that street. and I will defy you to go and drive that street. One of my other neigh, no, no, on the weekend. One of my other neighbors has called the police when that area is so tight, and they've come to inspect it. One of my other neighbors has an F-250. When that happens, you have to turn around and go up via paper drive, okay? This was a reasonable, uh, attempt to nullify everyone. And I contacted, when I saw the ordinance, I contacted the neighbors that live around me, and passed on the word, take a look at the ordinance, he went right to me. The answer was in the affirmative, yes, we need this. And as I, I swear to God, if someone dies, so I'll come after the town, and I will, I will testify on their behalf. Hold on, let me finish, okay? Because obviously, you're asking questions, you don't have the answers on. I agree, the other issue with regard to this, and there's misinformation about this, I had been informed with validating tickets, that if the record PD issues a moving drink or violation of speeding, they got the key and power, okay? And I believe if I had all the time, I had also been told if there was something like this, there, there was a lot to find. I suspect that I will achieve tonight, that is inaccurate information, and I would recommend to this council that you modify this ordinance to a point that people are, uh, held accountable. I feel like with the general assembly, to get the law changed, either it would be a restful ordinance or street law. Not that you can benefit from someone breaking the law, okay? And now, oh my God, we can't do anything. It's not inflexible, like we said about minimum housing, but that needs to be included in the ordinance. Uh, I, and with regard to, you said you'd move out if three signs weren't up. I suggest you drive on Prospect Street, because on the, uh, west side of the street, I, I drove it today, because I sometimes, uh, I'm wrong to do. There were at least nine signs on that street. Mister, who will address qualifications in the sign? In this town, where there are signs, no problem, that is, I said, this is on one side of the street, that allows rescue vehicles to go down. And heaven help you, if one of my neighbors dies, because rescue apparatus are not able to go on that street. And that's all I'm going to say.
Question, before you go. Yes, sir, you said you had somebody, you were somebody called the police to come out and inspect.
Yes.
What was the result of that inspection, anybody?
They probably weren't. My neighbor, who had notified the police, contacted the people on the fan, and that fan essentially is, I can't do anything, stop worrying about, I live here, you know, as I said, if someone dies, I'm sure they can drive, and then there's an ordinance that imposes a fine for doing this. I want Mr. Oles to address other issues, but it isn't really a issue on the weekend. I still have pictures on my phone from the weekend, and.
It's a Corvette.
No, that's. I showed them to you, uh, he had the pictures, they're right there, as I said. If a CX-30, which is not a large car, can't pass through that gap on the weekend, I'll down to you that evidence, or those fire trucks can't go there. And just the other day, I had five fire trucks in front of my neighbor's house, because of suspected gas leak. Had been helped them if it had been there on the weekend. You know, you have, there's a chance in the sand, but someone's going to die.
Al, can I have a question, question? And so the pictures, I'm still at the black car. Yeah, okay, we're looking to post the signage of no parking across the street from the black car. I, listen, for the red, I don't know the guy or, or girl who owns a black car or the house or whatever. I'm looking at the picture. Again, I don't want to tell somebody can't park in front of the house, that, I don't think that's right. But we're not, we're already mad, but if the signs go no parking on the opposite side, that's not going to affect the homeowners on the other side, right?
Well, we, we, we.
Black car's not going to be affected by this.
Now, and I find the way the focus was in these pictures, is that and the street, that, that and the house. Okay.
Right. And we had a picture like that. Just this morning, I was going up, and I actually stopped, because a car was coming down, I stopped, I let him proceed, then I rolled down my window and said, oh, by the way, there's an order being handled tonight, that they're going to put up no parking on that side of the street. Everybody, except maybe that house, or the houses that are a little farther, that are always on the weekend, that's how I see it. If you want me to go to you, I'll, I'll, you can visit me, and I'll rip you down the street. That's how I feel about this. Someone is going to die. Thank you.
Right?
Yeah, come on.
You know.
So you mentioned the fact that we can't tell people they can't park on the side of the street. There are signs in West River that say no parking on this side of the street. And it goes from here to here. They, they have streets that had those signs, so why couldn't we put that on this street? And coming and doing it on the outside where there's cars parked, it's not going to help me coming down that hill. So I still have to go into that alley to get down the hill. So it's, it's not, it's not going to help for me at all. And then I did call the police, when I first started calling, they, they came out and observed it. I talked to them again, we can't do anything about it, because they're not violating the law. And, and so he said to me, next time, not that call, every day. So I'm not in the phone every day, but I called them twice after that. And maybe that's why this got started, I don't know. But it's just, it just leaves me unsafe driving around that car. And I just, I mean, I think many of us not going to change if we approve this. Right, I mean, don't approve, because.
That's what I'm saying, that's me, it's not going to make a difference when you're talking about them right down the road.
It's usually on the right side that they put the signs, no parking. But that's where you're coming down the hill.
That's where I'm confused, and I meant to ask, so I'm not sure this is logical question, I'm focusing on the black car being the issue.
Yeah.
But the no parking is going across the street.
That doesn't make any sense. Doesn't help me.
But that's what's in, that's, so that's in front of us. I'm not sure what's in front of us.
What side of the mailbox is on, you live on the street?
I, the, the side, where the signs are.
It's up at the other side.
Why, yeah, I, I was listening to that as well.
It's going up the hill, right, you're right.
So was that on the opposite side, or by the top of the mailbox, that direction?
That's what I'm going to do, Al. That's not true, you told.
You can't talk on that for the.
This is for me and my horizon, of people who are dealing with safety. And if, if you don't, I mean, if someone's on the dock, so I'm not going to. Is no parking on the street, and I'll let the traffic condition came up with this, and I operate on the reasonable man for us. You're really talking loud, this is my right, please. You can't explain it. I love this stuff. I, I, I must have been getting lost. I have the issue of reasonable man.
Right?
Yes.
This, this is coming before us to vote, okay? I want to make sure anyone voting. So, we have a car on this side.
Looking at the car all the time.
Okay.
I turned, we can handle it. We're looking, she, we, we have a word.
We have a black car on this side of the street. We're looking at putting no parking signs on this side of the street, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but other comments are coming on about safety because of that black car.
Yeah, safe.
I, I, I get it, but I'm just saying, what's, what we're going to have here tonight, I don't know if that's going to help with the problem. But that's what's, but that's what we're going to do, I mean, we're going to help the problem. Okay, this is all right, but.
It's, it's really bad, because the black car is there all the time. Sometimes they're actually two there, as I said, that truck there holds about eight, and then seven or eight cars there, so it, it would.
If we say yes, we're going to put no parking sign. Does anybody know how many spots that's going to take? Is it three, and seven, is it ten? How long?
It's going from the bottom of the hill, to all the way up the cruise.
Oh, okay.
Up to the, uh, uh, the math is on your, I'm so.
All right, so they're going to go on the, on this side, to my left, they're going to go. We're still going to have a black car, or other cars parking on this side of the street. Correct?
It's a reasonable solution. Don't say, I'm, 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 I'm.
Wait, we, we're going to have other cars being parked on the way on this side of the street, correct? Is that what we're going on? It's no to this and yes to this, still, right?
This says.
That's what this is before.
This says.
So the solution is not viable. Continue to have a violation of some security file.
Yeah, Al. I'm just clarifying what we're voting. I'm not yelling at you. I want to make sure that I'm voting, what's going to, where to vote, I want to have all the information in front of me. I, I didn't check respect before the meeting. How about six colonial life? Um, with the blessing of David and Tim, I would volunteer to go meet Mr. Blackcar and take him for coffee.
Probably, maybe, that's all we need, and it's what, you, you, you can get them to point it out. Maybe someone, hey, have you ever considered the issue and possibly think of parking a little further off, so you're not blocking? I mean, parking gets you a lot more than arguing a subject like this. Now, if we're going to put these no parking signs up, I have a great idea for cost savings to our town, because these signs are not cheap. I can probably get them on eBay for twenty-five. You probably would have paid a hundred and fifty a piece for these signs, then the lady to put them up. But if you send the guys down with a half-inch wrench and a half-inch socket to anywhere on Polack'sy Street, Patac's Terrace, Manchester Street, Run Street, Remington Street, Brookside Avenue, Crossing Street, Manor Drive, we have dozens of these signs that are posted, that serve zero purpose. Nobody looks at these signs. There's a car that parks on Polack'sy Street, at the far end, leaving our house on the right. Up on the side, walk that they just poured. The cars look at every day, and right above the car, no parking, this sign. They park anywhere they want. We lost a business. Get it? Our neighborhood, on your side of the street, outside, yes. We lost a customer, she had the bloody beauty parlor. And they got so bad, the customers were upset, they see the signs, they can't stop to go drop their dog off, or stop to go pick their dog up, they go run, because they're going to get a ticket. She moved to Pirate Avenue, she left the place, and moved to Pirate Avenue. Everywhere in those streets I mentioned, we have major parking issues. I believe it's Red Street, down the hill, from Polack'sy. On, on the east side, the east corner, you have a telephone pole that's six inches on the, six inches wide from the end of the street. And then in the opposite corner, you have an SUV from Michigan that parks his SUV so far to, to that white street into Patac's, I mean, into Polack'sy Street.
And you're saying, you're on the corner, I don't want to cut you off, but stand the subject of this one.
But, but, and I'm just saying, if I turn blind and tell them, I'll be ignored. Fine, then he does it. My point being that we're going to put more signs up, and they're going to be ignored, because we pay for us the ordinances that we have on the books now. Enforce, we have five gentlemen, these two attorneys here to sit and write all this stuff. We pay them well to write these ordinances, and then we don't apply by them. You, you, they're always up on the sidewalk, parked on the sidewalk. And even when they bump out the, uh, the shadow line in front of the new playground, they still park up on the sidewalk, instead of from the curb to the shadow line. There's plenty, they still park on the sidewalk, right up against the fence of the playground. Nothing is, no ordinances are being enforced. We need to stop there. And we need to take care of this issue, that these folks feel is, is a safety issue. And if it means going to talk to this gentleman, and I wholeheartedly agree that having Mr. Bennison go down, big town official, that's a strong arm action. And anybody, anyone could just go down and speak to this gentleman and try to reason. And maybe he's, oh, geez, I didn't understand, I didn't realize, I never noticed, might be as simple as that. Cost a couple of dollars, we end up. Thank you.
Well, I agree, Tom, suddenly neighbors, if you know your neighbor, you can have that conversation, hey, it could probably look better than having a police department or a fire.
It used to be like that, maybe, when I grew up. No, I, I, I understand that situation, they're home alone, they want to be not bothered, they don't want to bother anybody. But if there's another neighbor there that's friendly with them, or talks to them, hey, they could say, hey, have you seen the aggravation your car causes in this neighborhood? They could try to keep it in the driveway most of the time, and we probably wouldn't be in this.
Very possible. I'm a neighbor, I'm only two miles.
To the, to the. On your way home, John.
So. Again, when your traffic safety got it, and you're trapped on both sides, as far as a single car on one side, it doesn't matter which side of the road that's on, it's going to be an obstruction at, at the top of the hill. Okay, so, all right, again, that's a.
So, thank you, that car will still be an issue regardless.
Wait, wait, he put no parking, and he's going to be in the same spot on the other side of the street.
No, now, 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 he's in his spot, because there's no parking on the other side.
Get away, okay, so, but that, by having parking on one side, that would, um, get the most room for people.
My main concern, again, because I, I don't know, a little white bird tonight on this issue is, I, the people on that street finding out there's going to be no parking, and I, I mean, yeah, maybe we're, we're not required to do it. I, I just feel like. The neighbors, I, I imagine you go all of a sudden, they put no parking sign for your house. Again, whether required or not, it would suck if you all about, you have to come to the house. There was a lot of neighbor people at the public meeting after that.
Al?
It's not going to be fun, I mean. No, I, I'm not saying it's good, I'm just saying it sucks. So you're just coming back to.
So, the other question I was, as it's currently written, you can't even vote on this, right? It says east, west, well, it's true in itself. You tell them suddenly you can't park on the west side of the street there.
The street runs, that was out, but just east to west side. You're hanging up, grouped up to us, coolers, okay? On the radiant side, that would be the west side. So that's the inside, what you can eat, sir.
West to the side. From coolers to intersection of Cedar, intersection.
The street runs on the west side. You got the inside, it's the lower side, radiant side, it's the coverage, it's. The side where the sun sets, the west side.
Okay.
So, my, so, 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 I just found, it doesn't seem like, and, and I'm going to put you on the spot, were you involved with the traffic safety committee? We weren't. And, and that, that may be because it took place before we talked about the town council being involved again, um, and making sure that you all are aware. The thing that, the thing that bothers me the most, and I think you're right, that car, and these people are saying that car is still going to be a problem, Chief of Home saying that car is still going to be a problem, is, and Tom, I agree, we have parking problems in Arctic especially, but all over the town. I think about Maydick, and how small those streets are. But those parking, those, those driveways are also small. So telling people they couldn't have their family over for Super Bowl, only if the Patriots are playing, um, or Miami, sorry, yeah. Um, so you don't have to worry about that. I, I think, I, I don't want to start, this opens Pandora's box, that we're going to do that, and people won't be able to park anywhere in Maydick, because those roads are far smaller than the roads we're talking about here, so. I think I said it at the last meeting, we need to have a group get together to talk about parking in general in the town, and how we go about it, and, um, I'm not sure this helps. I think, Al, you've told us that there are a number of signs that are out there that are not by ordinance, that people just put them up. We've heard that, too, so.
Yes, we have signs that could put up, because somebody made a phone call, and the sign could put up. Uh, in addition to the comment you just made, I've received since the last meeting a couple of phone calls, picking up on what you said about is there going to be something done about, the discussion was, Alec, parking in Arctic, parking on municipal lots. And I would suggest that it's a wise move, that some type of a committee would have.
And I've had a conversation with the town manager, who's not here to make, but he, I think it is his intent to get that group together, um, and then, you know, bring it to this meeting, so people can have it on an agenda and talk about it. But we definitely need to address it.
I received two phone calls after the meeting.
I received two phone calls after the meeting.
Yeah.
It's just one thing. If this if this was a flat road, okay, with no hill, no problem. It's visibility to pull your car out of your lane, go in the other lane, but if no visibility, if someone come up the hill. That's the problem. It's 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 a visibility and a dangerous one. Okay, thank you. If someone uses it, I think that is how I am.
No.
No, I won't.
So I would, I would think I would, oh, cool.
I'm going to take a whole whole vote, Jack.
Yeah. First, I want to say I do do my homework. And I did have a clarification tonight. I think that's my duty as a councilman to make sure I know where I'm voting. So I'm going to vote yes to bring this to a second reading. However, I do feel it's the people on the street that are going to be affected, which is the whole of us. They should have notification that this is going to happen. Whether they are for or against it, I don't care. It's not going to change my vote. But I would be really upset if I walk out of my house one day and I have a, you can't park for any house today. That's not great at all. Who are you going to tell me to? At least I I should have a say in it.
You know, and just to you, I called about it and I didn't know this was a meeting until I called the police again and I said, somebody's going to be meeting. So so I'm sorry, and I think the information is powerful and I think communication is powerful. And a lot can be solved with that, it's on the right one. So I wonder, will we ask to send it to a second reading? How unfair they're understanding that I I say entire Coles Road should be informed this is going to happen. And they have the opportunity to come to it. Then next week, is that dual?
As your clerk has indicated, that normally with parking, it's not, but there's nothing according to the council from recommending that you do that.
There's nothing, you're restricting the councilman or a resident. Put a little vote together and put it on everybody's door all the way down the street. If that's up to them, you know. Um, because I can tell you, no, it's not my law, I don't want to block. No, I I said I'd do it too. So again, the one thing I do want to say is when we talk about opening Pandora's box, and I totally agree. I don't want to wake up in the morning and find the sign on my.
Just can't have total. I I get it.
And and then I had no say in it. So if we notify Coles Road, going forward, we notify not everyone that is not.
And I think that's the right change, I do.
So we have to look at it.
And I, again, I thought Mary Beth, I thought the same thing coming into this meeting, saying you do for one, you do for all. You know, but.
And I and I.
The situation is there.
I also can't think of a time, I can't think of a time also where we like the whole the whole where we passed an ordinance for a whole street. Maybe like I know like once I can think of a guy.
You're not doing the whole street, look at the map.
All right.
Our.
It's it's a large, it's a large portion. I I know there's times when we've done a handicap spot for a resident, that's I think an exception, but I can't think of a time where we've done whole. That's what I'm saying, whether we should notify them, that was all the same shit.
Yeah, I'm going to cut out. I'm going to know, I'm not going to take any more comment. Okay, I was a very reasonable man. No, I have to have two hearings. You know, I, again.
Mark. So what I'm going to say is this week's rules for me, but not for me. And again, if somebody puts up a sign in front of my house that says I can park there, the game has changed. Regardless, I mean, these people are not doing anything wrong. They are simply parking in front of their homes. It's up to the drivers to navigate appropriately. And for that reason, I'm a no.
Jenny? No. Mary Beth?
I I sort of agree with what Jason said in that. Voting it down, don't get to discuss it again. Um, that doesn't mean I'm a yes. It's a tender.
I want to go forward.
I think it does require more conversation. So I'm willing to vote yes, will be understanding that doesn't mean it's a yes vote when we when we get to the next meeting.
It's like it's on me, you know. It's the councilman's word, and I always try to agree with a councilman with their word, especially when they're representing their word. Um, but I'd like to hear it come back for a second reading. Um, just so I can hear more, I'd like to see the residents get notified. If you are a mark, I'll do it for you. I'll do it for Tom, I'll do it for Alan. Now, if you might go walk the streets, we can have a couple of meetings. You don't, you have a black card, you're in a mess, so I I vote yes for a second. All right, I'll take mine.
Don't wear the broky shirt, though, that was scary, yeah.
Thank you.
You are, you are.
I'm not even going to bring that on, Joel.
So it's three to two for a second reading. No one to give that, yeah, I may not be yes next time.
Thank you.
September second, just so you know, is the next meeting. If you want to attend and speak or not.
Just stay away. I'm not here in the second, I'm away.
Oh.
Oh, we can.
We should table, we should table it for the second. Yeah, we have October. Yeah, mark, mark this. September sixteenth, everybody here.
I'm here.
So we, so that gives us time and we notify our special man, except for most of them. September sixteenth. And we can, we have that. Thank you. So it's the sixteen, sixteen.
Yes.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash six, amending section five point one deal of use regulations, non potential user in retail business, forty nine cannabis retail sales in section five point three, specialty use permits, seven cannabis retail sales of the wet or wet soil.
Look ordinance.
Second.
Al. Back in the number of two thousand twenty two, pursuant to an act passed by a legislature called Cannabis Act, a referendum. And the referendum uh stated that it would authorize the state issuance of licenses for cannabis businesses in the town of West Hall. That ordinance was, that referendum was passed by the townspeople. The main thrust of the ordinance is that if you, if the town agrees to allow the state to grant a license for cannabis retail sales, the town gets three percent tax from whatever the retail sales amount was. So with that from the state and everything was placed on hold because they had to get the uh Cannabis Control Commission up and running. Uh, I did not do anything on it. Discussed it with Mark once, CCC was up and running. And then I went to work drafting the ordinance, looked at a couple of other community ordinances, pulled together what I wanted, what I thought for West Hall. And then I contacted the legal counsel for CCC. The attorney I spoke with had a few problems with the way I had drafted it because they wanted it made clear that we do not issue a license. What the regulation says is that if somebody files an application with the CCC to have a retail cannabis license in the town of West Hall, CCC notifies us that this has been filed. We have forty five, we have ninety days to let CCC know whether or not where they are locating it is in a zone in which it's allowed. I had limited discussing with Mark and Mel that they would would only allow retail sales in a B or a C I district. So at that point in time, we figured, okay, how do we do this? So I proposed that if you, we get the notice from the state that you've applied for retail sales, we notify you, you're going to become before the uh uh the zoning board. The zoning board takes a look at it. And it's on this number of standards that you have to meet. And the zoning board, if you need those standards with the zoning board, the zoning board says, okay, you've number one met the standards. When I give you a license, we're just saying you've met the standards. And number two, you are in a proper zone. We notify the uh CCC that they're in the proper zone. Where I did want to go with the uh legal counsel of the CCC and she and I had a number of conversations is in the state statute, there's certain mandatory provisions. For example, the uh distances from schoolhouse, houses of worship, hours of operation, that kind of thing. I had, we we had narrowed it, I want to say to five hundred. And she said, stay, this is a thousand, so we couldn't do less than that. In addition, but now we put in a couple of other restrictions, just for what we thought would be best interest of the town. Legal counsel said, we like your ordinance. As a matter of fact, I was told that this was the first ordinance that they had approved. They had not made up their template. So I I have a feeling that this may go forward with it. And this is what I'm presenting to you tonight. All this is due, all this is saying is that if we, if somebody applies for retail sales and they meet state standards and they're in a proper zone, in a B or a C I zone here in West Hall, and they meet our standards, we can have it and we'll get three percent of the retail sales tax.
So so um under location, you're saying those are basically the state standards that we adopted?
When you say.
Under loc- location, so so.
Five hundred feet from this.
C, yeah, seven, seven B. Two B, it talks about one thousand feet, but we have five hundred feet in parentheses, so I'm not sure which one that is. So you might want to take a look at that. House of Worship, Educational Institution, Library, Public or Private, Art Playground, Athletic or Recreational Youth Center.
Some of those are state.
Because I think this probably eliminates any place in town. If you if you kind of look at it.
Those are state.
The state, all of those are, okay.
The distance is a state.
Could you explain the one thousand and then in parentheses, five hundred, is it?
Yeah, I think that's just a typo, my guess is.
No, it's on two different.
Yeah. But I I he just said he had a conversation. So so Al, seven cannabis retail sales. If we go to uh C, approval of standards, two, location, uses granted under.
It's on the third page.
Yes, that's right. Seven C, two, two B. It says one thousand feet, but then in parentheses, it says five hundred. So we just need to, yeah, I it's probably, it's probably a holdover.
I will review it.
Yes.
And send the proper.
And then the first one says five hundred feet from the nearest residential zoning district or lot line of a residence.
That's state, I believe.
Because, I mean, so Arctic is probably out of, because we have so so many residences in Arctic. I mean, getting five hundred away, feet away, I assume would be very difficult.
There's Arctic.
Yeah, and that's a no, it's go.
The backside of Asha Ball Residential.
Yeah, yeah.
I I'll have to check, I think that may be state. On the residential.
So that that, I think that just poses some problems when you look at it for us, given our density and.
I mean, I I know this is probably everything Mary Beth has said, but in this town, we're allowed eight liquor stores based off our licenses. How many cannabis stores are allowed in the town of West Hall? It's not based on the town, it's based on the zone, correct? Yes, but how many?
Five communities. Five communities are allowed five licenses. And of those five, two of them are special categories.
Okay.
So realistically.
You may not even get one.
There's three licenses that are going to be in five communities. Not not three from community, three total for whatever are five.
The three percent would be great, but I don't even know where we even begin.
Yeah, it would be great, I'm not gonna. Yeah, we'll take anything we can as far as that goes, but yeah, I just, if you could just look at that, because the the numbers don't seem to ma- match up, whether it's a thousand or five hundred.
That's that's a typo.
And and then again, I I think, I can't imagine there's a space in town.
Well, I was actually looking at C, Al, which is no cannabis retailer shall be located within two thousand feet from another. Um, does that go town to town? Because there's one in Warwick on Route Two. Right outside of our ward.
Right.
Yeah, but that wouldn't affect us, that's not within two thousand feet. So it would be anywhere down Cohesit.
I don't, I don't think Warwick is considered as part of our zone, I think it's a separate zone, yeah. Even though they're close to it, it's not part of the zone.
Still be two thousand.
But it says.
From that store.
Another retailer, yeah, that's a, that's a very valid question.
I would suggest we can, I don't have my file with me, but off the top of my head, I don't know which of these was state mandated and which of those.
And and also, I mean, what this ordinance really should replicate what they have, because what we do won't supersede whatever the state has for the ordinance anyway, right?
Well, I, Oz has a few things in addition to the state.
We can't do that?
Yes. Yes.
So the things that are common with the state, we have, we've used states.
What we can't do is if the state says five hundred feet, we can't make it a thousand.
Okay, and vice versa, yeah.
We can be more strict, but we can't be.
We could be more strict.
Not the other way around, yeah. We can be.
No, no, less.
We can be less strict.
Yes.
Correct, we can be less strict.
I would, I would request that you just continue with all of those.
Table or just.
So I will, I amend my motion to to continue this to to the second or the sixteenth?
Second.
To September second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. We just continue on this matter until September second, the first reading.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash seven, amending Article Two, defenses, section five dash thirty four, standards of the code of ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
I would ask you to begin by amend by amending the ordinance from two thousand twenty five seven to two thousand twenty five seven as amended. I sent you a copy of it over the weekend. When I drafted the ordinance originally, I had missed the fact that stuck off in the zoning code. There was one line that we had to get rid of. And basically what happened here was a couple of years ago, there was incident over the height of a a fence. Uh, it was decided that our fence ordinance, if you couldn't have fence more than six feet, was ignored more than it was followed. So we changed the ordinance to say that if you wanted a fence more than six feet, you had to come to a marathon bar myself to show us good cause. Well, that put the applicant in some expense, put the town expense for us to do it. And I can only say that not one application came before us that any one of us could in which I should say, well, the reason they want to do it isn't good cause. So it just sent me, this is, this this is ridiculous. So I spoke with Mary Beth and I'm suggesting that eight feet in a residence, ten feet commercial. If for some reason they want more than that, I made a provision that they can go to the zoning board for variance. What happened in the past, since it was an ordinance that said it could not be more than six feet, the issue that brought it up was where someone went in and asked the zoning board to give them eight feet, zoning board answered, tie, because the law said six, they couldn't do that. So this way, the law says eight, but it adds a caveat that if you want more than that, go see the zoning board. And I I think that um eight feet clearly, to what we've seen legally and not so legally, is not unreasonable.
Any questions for Al?
No, so I will amend my motion to move the ordinance twenty twenty five seven as amended.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving second, any other discussion from the council? Any public discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a whole whole vote, Jack.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, amending section five point three, table of use regulations and five point four, standard dimensional regulations table of the West Orange.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
This was a, this was a tough one. When we, I came before you years ago, we've been based on the legislation, I said, and we would be working on it. And one year, the first part that I'll touch on is that one of the things that was a real problem was we have a thing called a special use permit. The legislature in its wisdom says that if you want to have something that has a special use permit, you've got to have a specific and objective criteria. And I sent some of your, an example of what that means. The example I like to use is that if we want to have a gas station commend for special use permit, they're going to tell us how many pumps, how many service space, how far are the pumps from the street, how many parking spaces, how many room for queue, and it got ridiculous. So we initially went with eliminating most of the special use permits, which the city of Cranston has eliminated almost all of them. We then sat down, Marilyn and Bob, we went over and determined where we should have some, where we should mount. Marilyn said to go over that. The other big area was we had a crazy provision in the business park. It said that for, in the table of uses, it said Y slash S. So it said, you're permitted to use, but you're still going to get a special use permit, which made no sense. So we eliminated that, either it's allowed or it's not allowed. And the other big change we made was that in the original business park use table, we had a whole bunch of retail stores, retail operations. And Bob, Marilyn and I felt that the business park is not designed for in and out traffic. I don't know how to describe it, but we were of the opinion that the business park is a place where a communications company operates and operates out of it. A moving company operates and operates out of it. It's not a place where people are coming and going. We felt that defeated the idea of the business park. With that is an open, Marilyn was the expert on this area of the measurement system.
Am I addressing dimensional or uses right now?
Everything.
Everything, okay. A lot of the uses, we just don't do anymore, which is a spark. And there are some uses that create contamination, you know, different chemical uses and things like that. We wanted to get that out of there because we're going toward more contractor services, bringing business in where folks can do business out of that and use it as services for the residents, landscaping companies, carpenters, farmers. So we wanted to make that a little more practical. As far as big industry or anything like that, our lots that are left in the business park are either environmentally constrained or they're too small and they don't meet our dimension regulations at all. And when you have a smaller lot and you have a fifty-foot setback, you can build a building the size of a postage stamp. So we have to, you know, in order to continue to encourage business, even though it's not retail, we are still encouraging business to come in, so we need to adjust those setbacks so that it fits. I don't know if you have any other questions? It, it, it is a lot and, and takes a long time to digest and you guys did a ton of work on it, so thank you for that. Took a long time, we had to really figure out some of the historic uses that we, that were in the past. I mean, there's no, we don't have coppers anymore for shoes and things like that, so, so, I mean, we do, I'm sure. But it's not something that you need to have in the regulations to be a constant source of income of retail sales. Yeah, we, we've had that conversation that changing the setbacks just made sense because most every business is in violation of them, because you can't, we, we don't have enough space, so I'm glad that that finally was looked at and taken care of.
Going back in the time that the ordinance was enacted, the density of clothes or whatever the town was for was not.
Very different, yes, yeah.
So that, I think a perfect example is down in.
Can I just slide over on the microphone?
As, as to the changes that have come down and what in the fly.
Industrial lane area.
Industrial lane area. When Clarence owned it, it was a big wide open space. And, you know, Clarence had the ability, the door he wanted, because he had all of that space. Well, that's not the case today. So that the buildings in there, they can't be fifty feet back.
No. Right, I agree, so.
Any questions?
Definitely a lot to digest, but thank you for the work that you did, and I know it took a long time.
Any public comment on this ordinance?
You might add that state. Eric Reed, nineteen, Peter's line. One new line? No, almost. So listen to him, Al speaking this, we have the new setback that we're going to propose for down there in Clyde.
It won't affect anybody that's there.
Yeah.
She's here now, it's time.
So, but the setbacks are going to be less than what were the, in general, what are they going to be?
There's a, there's a whole table, Derek, that.
Table.
Any other comments?
Hearing none.
I do, I, I want, I, I just think there was a lot, this was a lot to, to look at and to go over. And I know you did a lot of work on it, both of you. But I just like to keep in mind, we talk about numbers here, we talk about setbacks. And we are, like you just said, Mary Beth, we are, we are a dense population all over town. And these are numbers, so when people go in and say, I think this requirement, this requirement, depending on what type of businesses, does have an effect on the environment around them. Which could be another business, it could be a resident, it could be a, this point, a duplex going up. I mean, we have housing going up all over the place in Arctic. I just want to keep that in mind before we issue permits to do something. Because there is an effect that could possibly happen that on other people, on other businesses, that where this number allows the people to do what they want to do and they need the requirement. But that effect will never be known with a number. It'll be known when somebody comes, it comes before us as a resident, it says, this is affecting us, what can we do about it? It's obviously the last straw to come to the council meeting. But that does come into play, and I just think we need to be aware of that, because sometimes, sometimes, as, again, speaking nine years under council, not speaking of anything specific, but those things do happen. And we have to realize that the people are the ones that keep the town alive.
No, no.
I just want to make that clear.
No one is more aware of that than me with the zoning and with the building office. And I, and I fully agree with you. The only problem is that when this was first done and when we redid it this time, when it comes to whether or not the building should have a ten-foot setback, fifteen-foot setback, it's a matter of opinion. And all I can say is that we, in this instance, we turn to the expert. Marilyn has had a long period of expert planning. And, you know, we look at other, we look at others and you have to, it, it, it's a judgment call. And, you know, it's, it's what, what.
I get, I, I get that too, and I know we've had some discussion, I know me and Mark, I know Al and I, I know Mary Beth and I, because when she talked about this last chance meeting, and I know Al's, and I don't know, we're working on it. Industrial, I'll use industrial as an example, you know, because that was one street that was brought up. I said, okay, but industrial lane is one section of town, but what about Murphy Highway? These, you know, now you encroach those neighbors behind there that, you know, it's, every section's different, but unfortunately you have to put it in black and white and every section has to be treated fair. And.
We tried, we tried.
I totally agree.
No, and I, I get it, because what's, what's going to happen here, I know what's going, as Jay said, I know what's going to happen here is, okay, if somebody, I'll get as much left buildable on industrial, but if somebody builds something on industrial and they want the same respect over in Murphy Highway, you know, ten feet from the property line, twenty feet from the property line, you know, there, there's going to be different issues and depending on where it is. And we'll know about it when it happens, because they'll call us. And, and I, and I get it, but if that's the ordinance, that's the ordinance.
It's a matter of, you know, we, we can't tell the future, you know, it's a whole town. And the, all you can do is, and I think she did a hell of a job in coming up with, with what she did and as I say, I, I totally defer to she and Bob as the back type of thing. But I don't, you know, I had some opinions knowing the town, but as to what works and doesn't, that's, that's no, you know, my expertise.
Any other questions?
I'd like to remind you that I have two boards that I have to answer to. I'm not a decision maker. I only can make recommendations. If an applicant comes in to see me and I believe that there is an issue, they will go aboard. And I will not make a decision in the latter than by myself. So you can be rest assured, but those people that are working for you for the town, you've appointed them, are going to make sound decisions.
I can, I can depress the attack. We are now having a lot less administrative decisions, impersonal decisions than we've had in the past.
Any other comment? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none. Mark?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I have audience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second reading will be September the second. For the record, Councilman Machado had to step out, so he did not hold on to this matter on the first reading.
Liquor license, town council acting as a liquor commission, request from ninety-nine Fletcher Dose LLC doing business as Joyals Liquor are class A liquor license for premises located at ninety West Four Captain.
Move the liquor license.
Second. Moving second. All issues have been resolved. I was going to ask the clerk that, because in your package, I think only three out of the four indicated that they were giving up on their objections, I just want to make sure four of the four were giving them up.
I told it four at the fore, but then everything was cleared.
Okay.
But I I can't tell you for certain.
Even if we approve this, it still has to be.
Right, but I'm just making sure that the, the closing equation, that those people, their debts were satisfied.
Are they here?
No, but they did send.
Do you want to state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Ryan Brady, representing ninety-nine Fletcher Dose. We have agreed and cleared with the current owners any outstanding debts that were previously brought up. Those have been cleared according to the vendor's record. And as far as we're understanding, at the city courts, those have been verified as identified.
So you already had your closing?
We've not had the closing yet.
All right, so all the debts are going to be satisfied after closing?
Any, any outstanding debts will be satisfied at closing and there will be a holdback for any outstanding debts as identified.
I would say subject to that representation that the council provide for the transfer. Everybody get that? Subject to closing.
And funds being satisfied, yes.
Any other comment on this license? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, good luck if.
You didn't. I, I moved it.
Yeah, she moved it.
I moved it.
Yeah. Okay, for the, for the next, for the licenses, can you just withhold N and vote on everything else and then ban as a second vote? Eighteen N? Oh, yeah. I'm just going to make a motion to, to vote on all the licenses except for eighteen N. Moving second, any discussion? You do have one question, Sam for Bridge Street. You guys, your license has everything but the thirty-first, you have nothing going on the thirty-first?
That's the Sunday. He asked for Friday, Saturday and Monday.
You don't have any fans or anything playing there that Sunday, correct?
No.
Just verifying.
No.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any public comment on these licenses?
No, I'm not going to complain or protest.
You're right.
No black covers.
All right. I just want to say how you were right when we had ice cream the other night. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And I just need some.
Then I would move, I would move business license eighteen N.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. I think after this meeting, I need the feast to come a little quicker. You all been approved, we'll see you on Labor Day.
New business items oh one and oh two were previously considered, a new business item oh three, approval of memorandum of agreement between the town of West Warwick and the IBP local three twelve.
Make the motion to, to approve the memorandum.
Second. Chief?
Good evening, council. In an effort to address the current staffing shortages the Westwood Police Department is facing, I am respectfully, I am respectfully requesting the town council to consider approving the memorandum agreement attached. This MOA is a result of an intensive collaborative effort between the administration of the Westwood Police Department and members of IBP local three twelve. This proposed MOA will allow for some much-needed relief for officers who have been subjected to being ordered in on a far too frequent basis. It also provides a financial incentive to hopefully inspire other department members to voluntarily work patrol vacancy overtime shifts to help provide important time off for our local work members of the department. Members of IBP local three twelve voted to approve this MOA on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, and I am respectfully requesting the town council to consider approving it as well.
Any questions for the chief?
No, I know that you, you did a lot of work and I see the guys there, thank you for, for stepping up and, and working together to come up with a solution, hopefully.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Huzz most.
She's fantastic.
All right, okay. I wanted to make you smile, yeah, I wanted to make you smile, yeah, exactly.
My whole team authorizing the Department of Public Works to enter into contract for rental of two thousand dollars in the amount of only nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
What's the resolution?
Second. Moving second, Jeff?
I know it seems like we're starting this early, but if we don't do it now, we won't, we won't be able to get anything.
Stove's around the corner.
I know.
Stop.
We have, just to give you guys an understanding, we have seventeen plows. We only have eleven trucks, plus three of parks, which gives us fourteen. And so we're still short, as you know, last year, we had to do with six trucks because they weren't fit for the road anymore. And so we're still short, as you know, last year, we had to do with the six trucks because they weren't fit for the road anymore, we only replaced two of them. Um, so this will bring us up, uh, still a truck, two trucks short, but, um. Problem we're having is one of our trucks that we, one of the use for backup trucks has become a frontline truck. And one of the other trucks that we use, excuse me, had the motor replaced last year, so it's on second motor already. Uh, blew during a snowstorm, as a matter of fact. Um, so these are trucks that, uh, really shouldn't be in our front line, but unfortunately we have to use them because of the level we're at. And as far as vendors go. We have one true vendor and it's, it's really a crapshoot to get other vendors depending on. You know, if they can get insurance, whether they wanna stay up all night, whatever the case may be, so we're not. We're not, we don't have vendors knocking down our door. So this will just help us out and bring us up to, uh, we'll still be short, but it'll bring us up closer to where we need to be.
So you took vendors, so the private plow truck, so what's? What's the issue, you know, like, I, I'm not quite following, I'm looking at.
A lot.
That's definitely cost wise, like fifty thousand dollars for two plow truck.
Yep.
Fifty thousand dollars, I've always felt like this, in case it snows. We could have ten storms, we could have two.
Yep.
So.
That's correct.
What, what's the deal with the vet, they don't wanna plow? People, what's?
Uh, last year, one of the biggest problems we had, um, with vendors was they couldn't get insurance.
Correct.
Um, plow insurance, people aren't doing it anymore.
Right.
They're not giving out plow insurance and what they are giving out is through the roof. And the wear and tear on the trucks, you know, you, 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 you buy a plow truck, just like you said. You get a plow truck all set up, you put it on the town. It might snow, it might not. So you just spent thousands and thousands of dollars on a maybe. You know, so people aren't doing it anymore, it's just not, you know.
So what are all the cities and towns doing? Uh, do they have?
Everybody is in the same boat that we're in, they're in trouble getting vendors, you see the signs all over the place for the state, the state's even having trouble getting vendors and normally, they have them knocking down the door. Everybody is having the same problem, um, and, um, you know, some of it is, uh, due to money, you know, if, if we're offering. You know, a hundred and thirty dollars, but the city of Pawtucket offered a hundred and seventy dollars.
So I think it'd be, in. I'm gonna let you speak, I've already spoken. In terms of, oh, are you finished? I don't wanna cut you off. In terms of cost effectiveness, even at two hundred dollars an hour. What's, what's an average, say a, a, a big storm, a one foot, we're looking at like twenty hours?
A one foot storm, you're looking at more than that, we, we don't have many storms that are less than sixteen to twenty, twenty hours, no matter what they are.
I guess my, my question is. And I haven't worked through all the math, but if we upped what we're offering to vendors, to attract more of them. The ones that are qualified with insurance and all that, even if it's more than the city of Pawtucket or whatever. Does that get us, uh, far into that fifty thousand dollars, near fifty thousand dollars?
Well, you gotta figure, it, it, at, right now, we do a hundred and thirty five, if you do a quick math, we do a hundred and thirty five dollars an hour, we go by the size of plow. Um, there was a point where we were hiring guys and I never understood it, we were hiring guys with plow and sanders. But we weren't using their sanders to pay them for it, which blew my mind, I couldn't figure out why we were doing that, so now we pay you for everything that you have. Um, so if you do the math of, uh, a hundred and thirty five dollars an hour and you average it out to twenty-four hours a storm. You know, and you do the math, depending on how many we have, you know, last year, I think we spent. About twenty thousand dollars on vendors. Right around twenty thousand.
So how many vendors have we had last?
Well, we didn't have them every stall, so I have one that I can count on every single stall.
So why didn't we have them every stall?
Because they didn't wanna get out of bed, they didn't wanna get up, they didn't wanna come in. Um. We don't normally call vendors in either, unless we're putting plows on the ground, we're not calling them in just to sand rooms, we do that on our own. Once the plows go on the ground, we'll call vendors in. Um. Some of them couldn't get drivers for their trucks, they call their drivers, my driver does, if they're not answering, can't come in. So. Yeah, you can sign up. But there's no guarantee. There's no guarantee I'm gonna get, I think that happened at least three or four times last year when we called vendors and they couldn't get drivers. Till now. You know, you think you're counting on them, you're expecting them, but they can't get drivers or they're counting on four trucks and they only give you one. So it's, it's, it's a, uh.
Yeah, they should make more money by part, part of the driveways, will allow us work too, right, I mean, depending on where they.
Well, driveways, in my opinion, there's, there's a little bit less wear and, depending on where you are. Less wear and tear on your truck following the road than it is following the driveway. And less things you're gonna back into following roads than you do a driveway, so it's very, it's a. It's a, uh.
So Jeff, one of the things I noticed is, this is, um, referring to two trucks with plows, but not sanders?
Yeah, yes, the sanders, they're gonna be five or six yards sanders on them, yes.
Okay.
That will have sanders on them. Now, keep in mind, we did this, I wanna say, three years ago. And the price for two trucks was thirty-three thousand, so look at the, the price that's gone up. Now.
How much does a truck cost? If we were to buy one?
If we were to buy a six wheeler with what we need, you're looking at about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that's, that's now, okay? So if you were to tell me right now, if you wanna buy one, that'd be the cost now.
I'm not telling you that.
I know that.
Yes.
But three months from now, that might be two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And it's also.
Price you have on there right now is one worth truck. Three quarter ton.
Yeah. But the, the thing is. You have to go where, where the trucks are available too, excuse me, um, certain vendors, you're out eighteen, nineteen, twenty months before you can even get a tab and chassis. To buy a truck. Some of them, you can get them in six weeks. And then you go to like get the body and the body's out eighteen months, so it's, it's. It's all supply and demand and it's all.
So the part where I struggle is, you know, we'll, we'll call it fifty thou, it's not fifty, it's just under fifty thousand, but fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money for maybe. And I guess my, my question is, would it be beneficial to explore upping what we offer vendors? There's gotta be a point there where they're like, you know what, I'm gonna make somebody get in that cab and I'm gonna get them out there to West.
Well, we, 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 uh, we talked with, um, Mark, I talked with Kristen. And we did that, we upped it a little bit, only up it so much.
To one thirty-five?
No, no, we're at, we were at one thirty-five, that's what we bet at, one thirty-five.
What do we got now?
Just not up to, to one forty.
I don't think that's gonna make people change their minds.
But again, not if I go to the state for two, two twenty with the sand.
But they're not, that's the problem.
No, they're going to the state, but they're not, that's their first choice, they're not coming here, or they're going to win soccer. Because they're also getting more hours too, like the state. The state will also call you in just for sand. Okay, so they'll call vendors in, twenty, thirty vendors in, just for a sanding event. We're not doing that. There's no reason to do that, that's not cost effective for us to do that.
You're gonna go with the money.
So we're only calling you in once we drop the plows on the ground. Now, last year we had what, three probable storms, I believe? So. You got called in three times, with the state. And I'm gonna say they had the same amount, let's say they had thirty, we had thirty storms. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine of those storms, their vendors get called in. We're not doing that, so. It's not so much, it's not, not just the price, the amount of times you're getting called. If, if you're getting called. Once a week, twice a week, or snowstorms, or ice events, or sanding, whatever the case may be, it's worth it for you to put that investment in your truck. Here, we're not calling for that. It's not, it's just not cost effective for us to do that, my personal opinion.
So it's almost like we're at the point where. We pay more to get reliable vendors in. It might mean that we end up paying more than fifty thousand dollars. But then again. Based on the one thing we can't predict, it might mean we pay almost nothing.
But the one thing you just said too, which is very big is reliable, dependable, and know what they're doing. Um, I've had some vendors just in the last few years that have called me, they have significant experience and they get out there and it's a disaster. And, you know, you don't wanna be sitting out there watching your vendors all day long.
We have a truck to help bring in all of our guys to.
That's correct.
I, I, in my experience in the, the years that I've been on the council. I've gotten less complaints from, from roots when it's our guys.
If, if you have seventeen plow routes and, and we have. Compressed the plow routes, there was more than that, and it was, how it was done, I'm not sure, but we've, we've compressed them. And, um. We still don't have enough.
But it's, I just always want it's.
We have seventeen plow routes, you gotta have seventeen.
Streets in West Worth, as we discussed, were like seventeen hours, are, are unique, and I think when it's, when it's a couple of guys that know a certain route. There's, I can think of the top of my head, every storm, I, um, Dave, I get calls from people because each real road is a little unique, I think the more private. Vendors you have, not that we don't, we can get them, but I think the, the more private vendors we get, probably the less.
Well, you don't think. So we, you get up into, to, uh, Mark Ford Drive up to, and all that. The roads are much wider than they are down here, so putting one truck. Up in that area does nothing, you have to have two trucks in that area, between that Acorn and Nottingham and all that, you gotta have two trucks in that area, you can't just have one doing that whole area, and that's the way it used to be. Yeah. Was one truck, you just, it's, it's not, it's not feasible.
So we don't have, you don't have enough trucks for all the, all the man?
Correct.
Do we still call all the men in for a storm?
Uh, depends, um, what I like to do is, I, I, I'd like to call them in so they can do sidewalks, stuff like that. Um, so we go to the civic center, we do sidewalks, and we also have it where, you know, guys don't wanna stay the whole storm, they all.
Alright, so if we're calling everybody in, we have something, so seven, seventeen men?
Yeah.
Calling seventeen men for a storm, but we don't have seventeen trucks to fit them, but we have things for them to do, this getting, that needs to be done.
Yep.
And we get two more trucks. Who's gonna get in those two more trucks?
Well, there's, the stuff that we're, we're having them do, so to speak, is, is, is busy work, I don't need.
So why are you calling everybody in?
I don't even necessarily put a guy out on.
So why are you calling everybody in?
Because of, no matter what, you're gonna, you're gonna have the guys in, cause you're gonna have guys going home. You're gonna have guys that stay two hours and go home.
Alright, so if we have that, then they'll get in the truck, then there'll be a vacant truck, somebody else.
I'm still, I don't have enough trucks for all my plow routes. You follow what I'm saying? I have seventeen plow routes and I only have eleven trucks, do the math, it's not possible.
Do we have trucks? Where we can put plows on that are not currently outfit with plows, like say, uh.
I have one that I'm actually getting ready to put a, a plow on, the Foreman's pickup truck, does not have a plow on it, it's just my truck. That is going to have a plow truck, I'll put on it, that's the only one left, I don't have a plow. Everything else has a plow. And I completely understand what it, I do, I completely understand it. But. You know, we, we may not have a bad winter, we may have the worst winter we've had since two thousand and fifteen. The reason we're doing this now is the state rents up all the trucks around. You, you can't find, but what, last year, the year that we did it in twenty twenty-one, they actually had to make trucks for us, in other words, what I'm saying is they had the truck. But they had to put plows and sanders on them and, and put them together, cause they didn't have them for that, cause the state.
When, when do you need an answer for this? Do you need it tonight?
Uh, I need it as soon as possible because we have to have, they're not gonna hold it for us.
Alright.
They're not, no, no, they're not gonna, and I don't expect them to.
Offhand, do you know what you budgeted for the major needs winter?
Well, this will be come out of, um. Storm services, which I'm budgeted, that, storm services is my budget for my vendors. So that's what this is coming out of.
Okay.
If I take it out of major winter needs, that's fifty thousand dollars out of my salt budget, so that I only have a hundred and twenty thousand.
But that's what it says is coming out.
Written up.
Yeah, well, well, that's what Kristen told us to put it on there, but we can work that out however much we want to.
So for your storm services line?
Yeah, I would rather have that be correct.
What is your budget for that, does this cover it?
Storm services is fifty thousand dollars, that's it.
So this would take up all of that?
Every bit of.
And you said that's usually used for salt and stuff?
No, storm services is used for.
Vendors, you said.
Major winter needs is used for my salt.
So, that leads to the question, does this leave any money for vendors?
No, you're going over the budget. If, if we get storms, you're going over the budget.
Alright, I'm, I'm personally, I'm not comfortable with this, and what I'd like to do is raise the rate for vendors. If, if it's my opinion to say what the rate is, or no.
But that's not before you.
Okay, so.
Um, again, we just, we just did that, yes, it was only ten dollars, but we did, we did just do that. Um, but it's just still on there.
But again, the only issue before you tell us was.
I'd like to know more about this and have a much bigger discussion on this prior to saying, I'm gonna go, no, I'm just.
Now, keep in mind, keep in mind. A year and a half ago, we had this discussion sitting here. And I got one truck and you promised me two more the following year and I didn't get them. So just keep that in mind also.
So can I amend my motion that we table this for tonight and get some more information?
What do you want, for me to just select?
Well, I mean, I think you guys wanna know about rates and, and, and Mark's not here, and you, you worked it with Mark and Kristen's not here, you worked. So I feel a little uncomfortable, and again, it does say the funding is available from the major needs winter line in the resolution. So if that's not correct.
Yeah, no, it's gotta be.
Yeah, so we need to change that anyway.
If I take fifty thousand dollars out of that, that leaves me with, you know, again, again, I only have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the salt. And we could blow through that in two weeks, or we might not blow through it at all.
So I would, I would amend my, uh, motion to table this till September second.
Second. Well, Peter.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Sorry about that, Jeff.
Release of site improvement performance bond for five fifty Wakefield Street, the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second now.
Five fifty Wakefield Street is better known as the North. As the, uh, condominium development up on the top of Wakefield Street.
I'm done.
Uh, this is not a resolution, by the way, so I, I moved the.
Release.
Release of the site improvement.
The project is complete. Um. The wastewater is signed off. Marilyn has signed off, Bob has signed off. We had a situation where one of the neighbors was concerned about, it was a crazy line in the. Uh, final, uh, decision that said that the planning board had to be satisfied with the shrubbery. The property line in the back. Turned out that there was an incredible drop between the developer and the neighbor. I had submitted pictures to the planning board, letters from Jim Jeremiah. It ended up that this slope was so severe, they couldn't plant anything on it. So they redid the, uh. Approval, and there's now a cement wall with a fence on top of it, because it's so deep. Um, the contractor and the developer and the neighbor came to an agreement. Where they, in the, in the fence, they put slats in, uh, that was done outside the town, the town's, uh, consideration. So the planning board gave, uh, final approval to everything that, all the stipulations. And finally, the development has actually been turned over to the condominium association. So it's generally not even out of the town's problems anymore. Everything is done, um, and it's just, it's a twenty-two thousand dollar improvement bond. That according to the state statute, or the ordinance, you have to, the planning board has recommended, you release it. And the, uh, the, the development through his attorney requested that the bond be released. Um. I, I, there's, there's nothing else to be done with it, uh, it's not even.
It's not a partial, in other words, it's, it's completely.
It is complete, and actually.
The fact of the matter is that now, if anything went wrong with the road, the drainage, it's, the association's problems like the towns.
And I did have a conversation with, uh, the chairman of the planning board, he called me to let me know that the neighbors had worked it out and it seemed to be happy, so.
Same thing, Mr. Marado was actually a constituent of mine who lives.
Yes.
Near the library.
Yep.
And he was in charge of our projects ten years in the vacant, would be a little, would be a little longer.
Definitely more than that, yeah.
But I know he broke ground maybe about eight years ago, ten years ago, yeah. So, big project, long project, finally done, and same thing, you know, I know there was concerns with the fencing and whatever, I know that's all been rectified, cause same, we had the same conversation.
Let's just say what, when they broke ground, that they were being sold for two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, and I think the last one sold for four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the uh, i- i- it's worked well, we, if, for example, there was supposed to be shrubbery along Wakefield Street. And the people who moved in said, hey, that's going to lock our view, pulling it out onto Wakefield Street, and it was removed. The, the neighbor behind, how far the development's going, one of the neighbors could, they put in shrubbery, it was all rocks. The shrubbery died.
Yeah.
So the neighbor complained about it, after everything had been approved, Mr. Morado went back in, put more fill in. And he personally planted the trees because he didn't like the way the landscaper had done it before.
Any questions for Al? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Request from Chris Carmody for closure of Mellow Street for a block party on September sixth, twenty twenty five.
Move the request.
Move the second, any discussion?
I didn't get it in, buddy.
He didn't get it in, buddy?
I, I'll ask Kristen.
Are the owners here?
No, I don't see him actually.
No.
But he also has a young, it's technically in your ward, I believe, I do know Chris, and they did it last year as well. And they actually put the grills on people's yards that's not on the street, they just like to block it off so the kids can play basketball and do whatever, yeah.
That's awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Upcoming appointments, sewer use quarter review, appointed fellow vacancy as an all shirt member for a three year term, sewer use quarter review, appointed fellow vacancy as a regular member for a three year term. Texas effort quarter review, appointed fellow vacancy for a three year term, school building committee, recreation committee. Um, and Texas River Authority appointed fellow vacancy for an expired term in June twenty twenty six. Upcoming town council meeting, September second, twenty twenty five, there's a regular town council meeting, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, there's a regular town council meeting, and October second. Regular town council meeting.
We're not meeting before then, actually we are, no, we're meeting right after the weekend, so. It is actually the annual Boish Festus in West Warwick, I know we had a meeting last week with uh. A major in many of the clubs who already left, but it's that time of year, end of summer is almost there, so. The parade Sunday morning, Sunday night will be the night parade, and Monday morning will be the grand finale party. I call that the hangover party.
Public forum.
Didn't know I wasn't going to go before I got a chance to speak again. Alan Plaza, five Robin Lane, West Warwick, and I've got a couple of items for you, uh, I may have missed it. Number one deals with uh. Lower Natick Road by the sewer plant, I had a doctor's appointment the other day, I was going towards it and I. Got there and found the building was blocked, so I had to turn around, go to the mall, I hadn't seen any notification that it was going to be closed. That was a while ago, the road is still closed as of this afternoon, so I just wanted to point that out. Also, apparently, there's a very heavy smell, odor in Natick. Dating back, you know, to the old days, before that was handled properly, I wanted to bring that to your attention in case you hadn't been notified of that. Uh.
Alan, I just, that, that, they're cleaning those lines and lining those lines.
I know they're cleaning the lines, but it's, it's been a while now and, you know, the people in Natick.
A- and actually, um, they did make a call out to people that typically have an issue, so. They are continuing to take care of it at the plant, but as they've gone through, it's, it's caused some uh, some issues.
Okay. Uh, is Chief Arone still there? He's going to hear on this one, I'm a believer in uh. You know, Chief Levine probably could associate with this, but this is strictly from Chief Arone, the broken windows syndrome. The cupola on the Phoenix Fire Station looks like bovine excrement, it needs to be taken care of, I mean, it's terrible. If you want me to buy the paint, I'll buy the paint, but it needs to, to be taken care of, uh. That's another item. With regard to the Payne Street building, thirty Payne Street.
Payne.
Payne, I've uh, I missed the cost, if that's included in the seventy one million dollar bond.
Absolutely.
Exactly how much is included for the rehabilitation of that building?
Ranging between three and a half to five million.
Even though the billion, the building is currently as, as of twenty twenty two, was assessed at one point three million. Going back to two thousand and two, it was approximately one million, so over twenty two years, it went up. Three hundred thousand dollars, and now to rehabilitate the building, we're saying it's going to cost ten times that amount. I just wanted you guys to be aware of it, you know, because you're all concerned about taxes and, you know. I don't know if the public, and the reason I'm talking now is the audience has left, but it's going to be on the record and people will know about it, as I'm saying. You know, three and a half million dollars, it's still ti- ten times the amount that the value of that building increased over a twenty year period. That's a lot of fricking money, pardon my French.
Meetings are very public and I can tell you myself, now Mary Beth brought it up and we've had some deep. Some very emotional conversations with the builder and uh, the, the, the people that are actually designing this building. Yes, so there is some plumbing, there's roofing, there's, believe it or not, the AC in it is, is a, so this AC would not pass.
Too loud.
For education, um.
Some of the standards.
Some of the things that you're learning and the standards that I'm learning on this building committee is very uh, interesting.
I've been around for a long time and maybe the superintendent can correct me, is air conditioning required? That's all I'm saying, you know, if people have a five oh four, yeah, they, it's required, and I know it's hot out there, but a lot of. Jesus Christ, Pilgrim High School doesn't have air conditioning, Tolgate High School doesn't have air conditioning. What?
The new ones are going to have it.
You believe that building's going to be built, that's like the, the uh, USS Enterprise is going to come around, and the USS John Kennedy is like eight. Years behind schedule, it was supposed to have been launched this summer, you're talking, I'm just, you know, I got a bridge in Brooklyn, I'll sell you. And the last item, I had raised it during my discussion of the ordinance, based upon what the chief has told me. Come up with something that there is a fine, it, they can't be a scoff law of something. If his officers are going to take the time to write a ticket, I think there needs to be an impact. And the biggest impact is in the wallet, I'm sure Mr. Williamson can come up with something, I'll work with our representatives to get it introduced. Uh. I'm becoming well-known up there, so I have no problem doing it. And I'll leave it at that, any questions for me?
Thank you, Alan, have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Pushing to move to executive.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, you can be quicker.
No, sorry. Um, Rochelle Heisen, uh, eight hundred Countryside Lane, East Providence. So my name is Shelley Heisen and I work with the West Warwick Health Equity Zone. I'm here today to invite all of you on the council and residents in West Warwick uh, to this year's International Overdose Awareness Day. Uh, International Overdose Awareness Day is a worldwide campaign to end overdose. Remember without stigma, those who die, and acknowledge the grief of families and friends left behind. On Thursday, September fourth, West Warwick Heads Community Ambassadors will be hosting an open house at twelve twenty nine Main Street. From twelve to four P M, all are welcome, there's going to be snacks, recovery resources during that time. And then, um, there will also be a remembrance ceremony and a candlelight vigil at six P M. Same day, uh, we expect the vigil to be at the gazebo, but we're going to confirm on our social media platforms and our flyers where the actual location will be. Uh, once that's approved, and then there is going to be refreshments, resource tables, and a speaking agenda. So again, all are welcome and to remember those who've lost due to overdose, thanks y'all, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around this whole meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Now, I'd like to make the motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Will you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.